Fledgling allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we have an approval of the agenda I need to change. Number six, from superintendent hiring update to VSBA is going to present and we need to vote on adopting the charge for the screening committee for the new superintendent position. So with that said, do I have an approval?
And tonight, one minor thing that I had sent to folks, if the board is willing, under buildings and grounds, look at that Shrewsbury Playground proposal.
Okay, so with those two, do I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion and we approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the agenda? Okay, and all in favor, and I actually need roll call from Gray and Sarah, hands are up. Thank you very much.
We do think we've got unanimous.
Okay, so unanimous. All right, so now on to public input and announcement.
So I think we had three folks sign up and we'll just go in the order of folks getting here if that's okay.
So Gary.
Yes.
Introduce yourself, let us know what town you're from.
Gary Fredt from Wallingford. It's been 15 weeks, one meeting with the superintendent, one meeting with buildings and grounds, numerous visits to WES, three board meetings, and I'm still here trying to get a neighbor's lock off a WES gate to allow the students and staff to get off the school grounds in case of an emergency. Just one thought as I was getting here, I wanted to add because I didn't know where to put it in my notes. This gate debacle is based on an agreement between neighbor and a former WES principal. And I'm kind of wondering, was the agreement in writing and were there any stipulations or parameters on this agreement, like, let's try it for six months and see if it'll work? But I'm sure if we have that in writing that we probably will be able to read that and we'll know. But leaving the previous MRUUSD board meeting, I felt that the board had finally decided that taking the chain and lock off the gate was the proper thing to do by having the neighbor notified that if the lock and chain was not removed within 48 hours, that the school district would remove it. Well, that did not happen. When Tim went to do this, he was handed another hurdle by the neighbor requiring MRUUSD to notify her in writing before removing the lock, telling him that that was the proper way to do things. So MRUUSD administration, wanting to be sensitive to the neighbor's wishes, did just that. After clearing that hurdle, the neighbor then told the admin that the gate was added after the original fence was put up and it possibly needed a permit to do so. We still have no documents to show any of that, but I have gone through the zoning regulations myself roughly. Certainly I have nowhere near the knowledge that the neighbor has, being the neighbor is the zoning administrator. But I've gone through there and I've found no provisions where a variance or permit is needed to put a gate in your existing fence. And I've also talked to people who have involved in zoning and who have told me that that doesn't even make sense. The neighbor said she was going to look into it and get back to MRUUSD. The can is once again kicked down the road. I'm really starting to see a pattern here and I wonder what the next hurdle will be. I'm still at a loss as to why MRUUSD, what MRUUSD has to lose by removing the lock and what the neighbor has to gain by leaving it locked. The gate would only be used by the school in the case of an extreme emergency. The administration in the past was hung up on the possibility of having to spend money if it failed to prove that the fence was legally on school, and it failed to prove the fence was legally on school property. Now that the neighbor acknowledges the defense is legally, is legal, apparently is it afraid it might incur illegal expenses by cutting the chain? My feeling for what it is worth is to cut the chain and let the neighbor do what they wish. I believe when I voted for your budget, there was an area for legal expenses. What better way to use them for the safety of our children? So my recommendation would be, if that's the way we're going to go with it, let's take the chain off, let the neighbor come after us, for whatever reason they may want to, for taking our chain, her chain, off our gate.
Thank you, Gary.
Next.
Erica Burner.
Yep. Erica Burner, resident of Wallingford, and I'm the neighbor. So let me, we have a couple of things that Mr. Fredt just pointed out. First of all, Tim and I, Tim never approached me. He has never approached me on when the lock had to be cut after your meeting. Secondly, if it wasn't writing, I never received it. So I'm sorry, but your information is wrong. Third, I watched the peg or whatever video you have and I'd like to reply to a few things that he said on there, okay? First of all, he said that he had concerns requiring the removal. First of all, it said the north end of the schoolyard, that you couldn't get through there. There is no fence on the north end of the schoolyard, there are bushes and there is underbrush, and I fully admit that. However, there are paths through the various yards, I know, because I've taken them myself. Furthermore, and my husband, by the way, is a security expert, furthermore, in an emergency situation, to have 125 people plus teachers or students going through a three-foot wide fence is impractical. If it is a shooter situation, which by the way, my husband was naval intelligence and knows about things like that, Mr. Fredt stated, "As in my kitchen, if it was a shooter incident, with the students and the teachers running through the gate and then jamming themselves in the gate, frankly, it would be like shooting ducks in a barrel." And I was in the military and I will concur with that. You could stand on that hill and just go ahead and shoot, especially with an AK-37 or an M16, which is what I trained on. He argued that the gate's absence from the evac plan is a serious flaw. This gets to the heart. Flaw or not, the gate is not on the plan and frankly, as stated in your minutes from the 18th December, and this is your draft, and according to the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust, the gate can remain locked. The gate's been there for 45 years. Yes, it has. I have checked into it. It absolutely has. However, that was when the Masons owned the property and it was considered a quasi-public property. My husband and I bought that land on 23 January 10 years ago. It is now private property. It was never put in writing that there was a walkway or access through there, a walking access. Please keep that in mind. Mr. Fredt went on to state that he received numerous phone calls and support for removing the lock and that he received a document from someone that went to the town hall records and there was a right of way to the neighbor's property. I have copies of the deed and I have copies of the easement deed granted to the WES in 1972 by the Masons, and I have them with me if you'd like to read them. There is a 20-foot easement for water and sewer on the south side of the property, and only water and sewer. I quote, "Erect, construct, install, and lay, and therefore, use, operate, inspect, repair, maintain, replace, and other and remove sewer pipes over, across, and through the land of the grantor," which is my land, situated in the town of Wallingford, County of Rutland, and State of Vermont. In speaking to several members of the Mason Lodge, who are also Rotarians as I am, verbal permission was given to allow walking access through the property to the schoolyard, but that was not codified in writing. Mr. Fredt mentioned my concerns of a student getting into my backyard. Quite frankly, he misinterpreted the whole thing, okay? Students play along the fence during recess. I watch them, I see them. If I'm out there and working in the yard, they're there, okay? With the gate open, and by the way, was rarely ever latched, a student could go through the gate and into my backyard. That's kind of minor. I agree. But more importantly, that student could continue onto the street, namely Route 7. I am not home many days, so his comment about calling a school administrator really is a bit much. Besides that, I'm not a babysitter. And frankly, my concern is not so much for the schoolchildren when school is in session. And I'd like to make that point clear. If it's in session, that's a different story, as I am more concerned about the times after school and when the school is not in session. From 2015 to 2019, when I did lock the gate, when the school building was closed because of COVID, I had people and adults cutting through my side yard to get to the schoolyard. They have left trash in my yard, they've allowed their dogs to poop in my yard, and by the way, dogs aren't allowed in the schoolyard and they are in the schoolyard. I have had kids sit down in my side yard because they decided they wanted a picnic and left trash. I have had kids riding their bikes back and forth on my side yard through that gate to get to the schoolyard. This is what I am complaining about. They are trespassing, okay? And should any of these people get hurt, my homeowner's insurance won't cover them. And why should it? They're trespassing to take a shortcut to the schoolyard instead of going around. Now, in reference to the principal, in 2017, I did check with the then-principal and she indicated at that time, there were no children or students walking to school using the gate. Keep that in mind, please. I also informally checked with the town select board chair and asked who owned the gate and he said he didn't know, probably me, because it was there for the daycare that was proposed that didn't go through. Have you considered as a board, the fact that with the gate open and unlocked, that could constitute an attractive nuisance, which would make the board liable for any injury that a student or a child not associated with the school, even if they would be legally considered a trespasser, if injured, that the school would still be liable because the injury could be foreseeable? Mr. Fredt also mentioned, "In my kitchen," that he put the gate in. My immediate neighbor said that the fence was taken down after I reed for access to dredge roaring brook. If that was the case, the fence would have been, quote, "replaced" even around 2011, maybe 2012. The town of Wallingford had zoning regulations in place since the 1970s. As the zoning administrator, I sort of know that. The town had setbacks for property in the neighborhood commercial, which is where this is located, which were 10 feet from the property line. It's not the gate, it's the whole fence is on the property line and technically is in violation of the town ordinances. However, since it's 210, it's kind of old, okay? So it's not just the gate in this particular case, it's the whole fence that would have to be moved. And I never said it had to.
We only have like another minute.
Excuse me?
They're only allowed like another minute.
Okay, I got you. I'm almost done. As the zoning administrator, I am also somewhat mystified that the school board, I just learned is 13 weeks, would have not notified me as a homeowner that this matter was for any discussion. More importantly, according to your draft minutes, Carol makes a motion that the school administrator will notify the neighbor that they have 48 hours to remove the lock. Pat seconded. There is discussion in how to approach the neighbor in this discussion. Come on, folks. If the planning commissioner or the development review board of Wallingford does not notify a property owner in writing and a certified letter that there is action being taken by the board, the town would be legally liable. I would assume the school board would have had the same consideration to the neighbor. The only notification I ever received up until 6 o'clock this evening was a call from Tim to tell me that you had voted to turn the lock. He did not mention 48 hours. The only way I found out about it was it was in the Rutland Herald and a neighbor told me about it. I honestly do think that a school board in a case like this should notify the property owner and should take into consideration that I am not talking about schoolchildren crossing the yard to get to school as much as I am with that gate open, children and adults who are not school board members or have anything to do with the school, cutting across private property because the gate is open and they don't want to go around to the main entrance. And as for security, the north side, you can cut through that. I've done it and I've seen other people do it too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Norm Flanders.
Good evening. First of all, I hope you had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Appreciate everything you do as a board. Last month was my first time ever attending a meeting. I know you got my letter today. If you had time to read it, there's some concerns I have regarding policy that was not followed. Your own policy, as outlined in your bylaws, A6, that says I'm entitled to my time on the floor during discussion. Nowhere in that policy does it outline that I am restricted on any comments to this period in time. Nowhere does it outline that. So you, as a board, under your own policy, last meeting or any meeting, if that policy's true and binding or in violation, violation of my right and every other member's right to speak when they have a concern regarding how you're spending our money, how you're addressing issues, of which I had with this fence, as well as the superintendent's thing. I was quickly shot down by your acting chair and the assistant superintendent came over and explained to me that I could not talk during the meeting. Through research, through your own bylaws and going on the website and everything, I found out particularly what you violated. My son Nicholas and I have never discussed any of this until that letter was sent today. I kept this on the low profile. I did not want to impact anything that he had for a decision or any input. What he does as a board member for Wallingford is Nicholas. He does not represent me in the town of Clarendon, okay? I also looked at some of the state statutes regarding public meeting. You follow into them too, okay? I sent you links and everything. I'm wondering where the board's going to go forward with this, violation of your own policy. You can limit me, just like you are right now. If I raise my hand when, say, Mr. Doucette is bringing something up and says, "Any discussion?" and I raise my hand, the chair or Mr. Doucette can acknowledge me and say, "You have one minute," okay? Robert's rules of order, of which you do follow, is outlined in your bylaws. I'm not here to bust anybody. I'm not here to be mean. I'm just here as a representative in my town to come and speak. When I have people telling me, "You guys are a clique and you're a board that restricts things and sticks up for each other and you have each other's back." That was told to me. If you read my letter, you'll see where I let that all slide. I came here to see what this board did and how the meetings were run. I left here disgusted, to say the least, very upset. I've gone to other meetings and got my time on the floor under Robert's rules of order. I can go to the town meeting and get my time on the floor. I can go to any public meeting and get my time on the floor. You can restrict me. That is concrete. I don't ask nothing more or nothing less. And if I sat on the board and I heard that people were calling me a clique, I would try to work to dispel that. I would make it publicly known that you welcome involvement, okay? You represent us as taxpayers. You represent my grandkids. You represent all the kids, okay? Why can't a parent or a grandparent or anybody in the community have the right to come in here and say, "Mr. Doucette, I want my time. I disagree with what avenue this is taken. Let me put my two cents in as a community member." You've got people that won't come to this meeting. They told me flat out, they will not come. They hate this middle of a school board. I was shocked, but yet I took it all with a grain of salt. I said, "I'm coming to see, witness, and observe." And I hate to say, I left here in despair, upset, and very discouraged with what I saw and what I had to endure, okay? All I'm asking is you, as a board, reread that policy. I've got a copy here for anybody that's never seen it. Follow it. If that's your guideline, just take the minute to follow it. That's all I ask. I'm not here to bust on you, I just want to work with you. I love my school system, I always have. I put three kids through this school. I've got 11 grandkids that are coming through. I want to see this place get back up to how it used to be, recognized in the community and in the state as one of the best schools to come to. And through that, it's through my right or any other community member's right to come in here and speak and help to work with you to make things better, okay? I didn't read everything I got in here. You guys, a lot of it's in my letter.
We got it.
And I really do appreciate everything you do. Man, I mean, it's a tough job. I know. I was fire chief for nine years. So pretty much the same balance, okay? You get input from the community. So with that said, thank you for what you do. Let's move forward and open the floor up now and then to people that have concerns. Just limit it. You have that right, under Robert's rules of order. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. So now that brings us to board discussion of any of the public comments. Would anybody like to say anything about what Mr. Fredt had said? Okay, anybody want to say anything? And I apologize if I butcher your last name.
Burner.
Okay, Burner said, "We mailed you a letter. I personally signed it."
I haven't received it.
All right.
And it's at 6 o'clock tonight.
Let's check your address, because we got the certified mail label back. So let's talk after, if you don't mind.
Okay. We will send it out again and I will get you. Yes. So we did, we've tried. Anybody else want to say anything? Any comments for Mr. Flanders or any discussion around what Mr. Flanders said?
I can say something. Thank you for taking the time to come again and for the detailed email. I didn't have time to dig into all the resources. Thank you for that. And Nick also sent a lot of resources yesterday afternoon, I think. Yeah, I think you're raising some interesting points and some important points around how to run the meetings in a way so that we have participation and also can make sure we're getting to all the business we have to get to. And as someone who's still learning, but like working hard to learn how the board operates, I want to learn too of like, okay, how do we make space to really have voice in these conversations? Or like, where even is the space to bring something forward that's not on the agenda ahead of time, things like that? I think we can do better and I'm taking this stuff really seriously and I really do appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I've been on the board now for a while, few years, and it's very hard for me to hear you say "clique," just like you stated in your letter. It is very hard. As being chair for the last few years, it takes a lot, as you know, Norm, with doing what you have done to get everybody to work together. I know what the towns say about us. I know what the towns say about school district. I have had a lot of things happen personally with the school that I've had to reevaluate a few things. And I choose to be here because I want to fight for the kids who have no voice, which is very hard for me to sit here and say. So I know, Norm, every word that you said in your letter that is absolutely true and is very hard to deal with sometimes.
And I didn't bring that up to be mean, it's just, it floored me.
No, I, yeah.
When I mentioned I was coming to this school board meeting, you wouldn't believe how fast people spit that out. And it took me back and I'm like, holy crap, this is the first time I'm hearing this. And I've got a son on the school board, he doesn't come and talk to me about what happens here and I don't expect him to, but I'm sure he's probably heard it, but we've never discussed it until this letter, which he got today from you guys apparently, because I didn't send it to him, because I wanted to keep him out of this, between him and I. And I feel your pain. And as a town representative or town resident, I think it's totally disgusting that people in the town feel this way. And I just hope that the board can move forward, whatever it takes to change these people's minds, one way, form, fashion, or another.
And, Norm, we, we are putting a lot of effort in actually around community engagement, inviting people, trying to like let folks know, "We're here." There is a lot of effort happening. I think sometimes changing opinions, right, or like realizing that like the board changes a lot, there's a lot of evolution that happens and sometimes opinions can be formed and then it's hard to evolve those opinions, you know, without engaging and seeing what's happening here. Because my perspective as a board member for less than a year is like, whoa, there's hard discussions happening, there's good discussions, there's pushback, there's curiosity. Like, I'm not seeing what, and I don't have the historical understanding, I don't have years on the board, but I think that this board is operating very differently than maybe some of the public opinion that's out there that maybe is a little outdated at this point.
I mean, I can.
Unfortunately, I have to say I'm going to go right with Norm because.
I can.
I'm a longtime member of Clarendon and I have family in Wallingford, like most of the town in Wallingford is my family and it's been there for years.
And Carol can attest to, I spent a lot of time with my kids at the school and doing things for them. I supported the school. I still support the school. But the thing I don't like is when you make a decision as a board and I have no public comment until I come here and say, "I want to discuss the fence issue that you talked about last week, but you already voted on it." My input is null and void when you've already had a legally binding. My input is null and void when you've already had a legally binding vote, which legally, that's the other thing I forgot to mention. Without public input, how is this legally binding? How is anything legally binding 100%? If you vote on something and there was no public input and there's people here to speak on it and they had to wait for it to come up, but yet we're sold you can't do it. Legally, I'm looking at this going, how is it legal as a binding arbitration to the town?
Um, Gray.
Yeah, I guess I just, I hear what.
Turn yourself up. We can't hear you.
Really? Okay, my mic is turned on.
Yeah.
Seems to be working. You can't hear me, huh?
Yeah, I have a feeling that speaker is way up, though.
Hold on.
Okay, standing by. Any better?
Yeah, William. Keep talking, Gray.
Keep talking a little bit. Like, we really can't hear you, but we're trying to figure it out as you speak.
So, am I?
There you go. You're good now.
We'll have to remember that, William.
I want to say first of all that I appreciate that this gentleman came and he actually took the time to come. I'd like to say that's a fairly unusual occurrence. I'm on the community outreach committee and we've had multiple meetings since I was elected to the school board back in the spring. And not very many people come. We are working at finding better ways to publicize that meeting. And we recently voted to make the opening part of that meeting a community discussion time, when people who have issues that they want to talk about can have a bit more of a free forum back and forth and then have some assurance that the issues that they're bringing are actually going to get brought to the attention of the people who might be able to address them. But I think that calling this school board, which among its weaknesses is that it's relatively new, I include myself in that, but it's certainly not a clique regardless of what some members of the public may feel. That's an uninformed description. So I'd like to put that thought to rest. As far as the rules of meetings that you've brought, well, certainly we need to make sure that we are in compliance with the relevant Vermont state regulations. And I'm sure that we'll dig into that and make sure that we are. But this school board is not a clique. And we value public input and we have a community engagement meeting coming up. I don't have the date at the tip of my tongue, but it's on the calendar and I'm sure somebody else on the board can point out when that
Fifteenth.
meeting is happening. So, how do you public input? So thank you very much and thanks for fixing my microphone.
You are very welcome on that.
So if I could talk to.
When is the community?
So, I just, well, I had two points. I mean, one point is that Gary is a member of the public and he's come to buildings and grounds. He's come to community engagement. He's come to the full board. So we have had public input. And I'm glad that Erica came tonight.
Yeah, but as he pointed out, after you already voted.
Well, we had been discussing it for many, many weeks, but.
And it was on the agenda.
Nobody told me.
It was on the agenda, but the other thing is I did want to say that we do have community conversations. They are before the full board meeting, the second meeting of the month, and it's a half hour of open discussion so that we do have an opportunity to hear from the community on issues. And that's, our next one is going to be January 22nd at six o'clock. So that is an opportunity to have a more informal meeting of the public as opposed to a board meeting, which is a meeting of the board. So how we can maybe make that more tied to the board meeting, that's something we're definitely, we want to hear. We want to hear about how to do that. For sure. And that's why we're having that open format on a regular schedule. In the past, there have been community engage or community conversations, but it seemed like they were hit or miss when they were. And now we have a regularly scheduled one. So I just want the public to know that. And we really welcome people to come and have that discussion with us.
Okay, I agree with that, but that's not during your meeting when your policy A6 says I have a right to discuss what's going on with the agenda. Not trying to be a stickler about this, but that was the whole thing that I wrote my letter about, was the violation of A6.
Sorry, I didn't have a chance to read your letter.
And I just wanted to bring it up to where we can all move forward. We can get in a new direction. And when somebody comes in here to a meeting and you guys open the floor for discussion, whatever it is on the agenda, somebody raises their hand, nobody goes, "You can't talk right now. You can only talk during our public comment session." And then have another young lady come over and explain to you that this is the rules and regulations. And this is the reason why a lot of people don't participate, because I was told that numerous times. They have no input. They have no say. They have no comments. Why do I want to waste my time to come to the meeting? And they informed me about me wasting my time numerous times. And I was, like I said, I was totally shocked. I mean, and that's why I reached out to you, because of being in disgust of how the community perceives the board and how things are partaken here. That's my input.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would, like any other board members? Okay. You're going to move on to the next agenda item.
You don't want to stay all night. I can follow up with you tomorrow.
Which is approval of the minutes from 12:18. Do I have?
Are we doing minutes?
Yes, I have an approval.
One thing, did we get a motion signed?
No, I haven't gotten anything. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from 12:18?
I can make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do I have any discussion on them? Any edits?
I have one fix to a name. A member of the public, last time, we had the wrong name down. It should be Michaela.
Okay.
So I'll get that to Rebecca to get that fixed. That's Michaela Wade. So that's the one thing I have.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody saw?
Yes. I think there's a couple of other like names that are misspelled. I don't know if we want to check those, but I think Tanya Flanders is Tanya, not Tanya.
No, that's how she's.
It is? Okay, because when she was a student, she didn't, she's a former student. Okay. Also, in the the section about buildings and grounds, when we were talking about the gate, there's a sentence in there that says Visbit has been contacted and stated that the gate can remain locked. It was also mentioned in there that it can also, they also said it could be unlocked. I think it's important to have that in the minutes because if somebody hasn't been to the meeting, then they might not know that Visbit also said it can be unlocked too.
We can, and what we can do is find all of that information because the, it can remain unlocked if we X, Y, and Z. So.
You mean like put a sign, put a sign up? Sure.
Yeah, because they did want us to do more than
Right.
just.
Right, and we have to put a sign up.
Correct. Yeah, we can dig all that up and add that from that communication.
That'd be great.
Any other?
I just had a minor change when we were talking about, I think it was the tuition rate. And where it where it also clarified that the town pays the tuition rate, not the families of the students. I think it should say sending town in that.
Yep, that's a reasonable clarification. That makes it more specific.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Can I just, sorry, get a quick reminder who did the motion and the?
I did the motion.
Kim did the motion and?
Lenny second.
Lenny second.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so with those changes and edits, do we all in favor of the minutes, approval of the minutes? Sarah, two?
I see a hand, so.
Okay, so, no. I am abstaining because I was not present.
Okay.
Okay. So with the change, now we have our VSPA reps and helpers doing a little presentation to us. And then we will need to vote on a charge for the committee, for the screening committee. So, welcome Elaine and Jeff.
Hello. I'm Elaine Pinkley and I'm the consultant for the VSPA that is working, will be working with screening search committee to find your next superintendent. Did you all get the process and timeline? So you have a copy of that in front of you? I'm just going to run through that. Let me just say a little bit about myself. I retired as a superintendent of the St. Plaine Valley School District after 18 years. Three years ago, previous to that, I had been an elementary and middle school teacher, an elementary and middle school principal, a reading coordinator, a good and talented coordinator back in the day when that was a thing. I ended up in the classroom when that was a thing. And for a couple, three years, I was the deputy commissioner of education in Vermont. I've done a lot of searches and I am very much forward to doing the search with all of you.
I got it. I'm sending, I'm doing it right now.
With us today is Jeff Francis. Jeff, you want to give a really quick introduction? Jeff is going to be working with us on this committee.
Thank you, Elaine. Hello, everyone. As Elaine noted, I'm Jeff Francis. I recently retired as the executive director for the Vermont Superintendent's Association. I'm ready to retire from that position, but I still have some time, so I was in conversation with the School Board's Association about helping them in future superintendent searches. Elaine, as she noted, has done a lot, so I, for all intents and purposes, am shadowing Elaine through this process. She'll call on me to provide some assistance to her. Those will be her decisions, but I'm looking forward to participating and thank you for allowing me to be Elaine in this process.
Great. So last week, Jeff and I met with Andrea and Len. We had about an hour-long meeting to just kind of go over where you are, what the process looks like, and to plan this meeting. So at the front end of it, we will be getting, you will be gathering a committee together. So that's going to be one of the first things that you will do tonight is talk about who we'd be serving on this committee and prove the charge. And I'll go over that charge with you after that. Once you do that, I will put out a survey that will go out to all families, all all community members, to the extent that we can reach community members, faculty and staff. And to see, what are you looking for? And the basis, the responses to that survey will help form the posting that will get posted, I think it's January 17th. So when we get the survey results back, we'll find out, oh, in the rural river Unified Union School District, they're really looking for somebody who is a collaborative leader, who has a strong financial background and is good at community engagement, let's say. Right, based on what they're per year receiving. So we'll make sure that the posting is clear about the kind of person that you're looking for and the skill set that you want that person to have. After the posting, and that posting will stay open for three weeks. Sometimes people say, is that long enough? And I'm here to tell you that. People who are looking for jobs are always looking at school spring and they're looking at those postings. So when we post, we don't post for these three weeks and then we close it down. The posting will say preference given to applications received by this date, but it never closes down until the end of the process. It's very rare that anything comes down after three weeks. Following that would be the first meeting of the committee to do a little bit of training around what the norms of a search are, confidentiality, questions you can and can't ask, to share the survey results, to look at, kind of do an overview, just like I'm doing tonight, of the process, and then to assign homework. So there is a little bit of homework that's involved in the committee work. That's the first meeting. After that first meeting, they will also, the committee will be given access to the school spring site and we'll see all candidates and we'll use a rubric to determine like which candidates they prefer. At the next meeting, which happens a week later, then we look over all of that information, the way they rated the candidates and anything else people want to add, and the committee selects the candidates that they want to bring in for interviews. And I'm just going to take a minute here to say, I'm very clear about two things. One, the confidentiality of the process. People who apply for positions have a right to remain confidential until and if they are moved forward to as a finalist candidate. And that is the board that hires the superintendent. And though the board has this committee together to inform the board, to make sure that like their voice is heard, you will have a conversation after really tonight about who you want to be on that committee. I know that you had a superintendent search not long ago, so that you have some idea about what the committee should look like. I will say, more than 10 people on the committee is not the best committee. You don't get more from adding more people. And of course, this is your search and you can decide to have more people. But I would tell you that it works better with 10 people or fewer. So at the next meeting, when we're reviewing the candidates, there's a lot of conversation around the candidates, the materials that they submitted, the letters that they submitted, and how well that aligns with what you're looking for, their background, their experience, and reference letters that they have. So that's the basis upon which the committee will decide who to bring forward for interviews. The homework that happens after that, after some discussion at that meeting is around developing questions that are again aligned to what we've learned in the survey and what you posted. So you posted for a position. You said you're looking for something. The questions and the scenarios we're going to place are going to be wrapped around those things, what you're looking for. The homework is going to be about like coming up with what those questions are. And so the next meeting of the committee is a full day, likely a full day meeting of interviews. And that, following the interviews, is then when the really hard work comes and deciding who are the candidates that you want to bring back for the next round. And the next round typically involves a site visit to all of your schools, to the school district, perhaps a community forum, a faculty-staff forum. So it's a busy day. I mean, it's a day that like the candidates are going through their paces. At the end of that day, probably a brief committee interview and then a decision to move the candidates on to the school board for a full board interview. And that sometimes happens on that same day. Depends on how many candidates are moving forward. And sometimes it happens at another time. And that is something that, you know, if you're looking at the process and timeline, you'll see there are no dates there. That's because that's when it becomes very specialized to your own situation and how you want to do it. Any questions?
Can you talk about, sorry, Kim?
No, go ahead.
Can you talk about how we had previously had, you know, like four board members, two teachers, two admin?
If you want me to.
Oh, you, yeah. Maybe.
The last time we did this.
And then, sorry, Kim.
No.
No, no, no.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The last time we interviewed, searched for superintendent, we had four board members, three teachers, two people from central office, one building administrator, and one support staff.
I think I had that four, five, six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 10.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually what Len and Andrea had shared, and I think that's a good, and that represents who you'd want to represent. So if this board is still good with that, that's a good, you know, good stakeholder group for the committee.
Community members, or no?
No, not.
I'm sorry, not yet.
Good question, Carol. It, this is for the search committee. Once this committee puts together candidates.
Gotcha.
Then that's when you can, that's, I have written down, community forums.
Yep.
Which basically is where you bring in community members, students, if you want, um, those, the other stakeholders.
Gotcha, yep.
And that's when you have finalists. You don't do that in the first round?
Yes, gotcha. Um, Kim?
Uh, oh, I just was curious with like, yeah, with, with staff, like how they go about that. I was just curious, is it like?
Select staff?
Yeah, how to select staff.
Okay, so, um, I've shared a letter with Andrea and Len.
Okay.
That I met with earlier. That's an invitation to anybody who wants to participate. So the invitation goes out far and wide to everyone. And then there's a process that you have to determine, well, who will be those two teachers if 20 people volunteer? Who will be the one administrator if all of them volunteer? Who will be the two central office? That's probably, that's a narrow, smaller group. But, thinking about it as you wanna make sure that you have a balanced group of male, female, different ages, experience, and representing the different towns. It's not, I've never found that it's hard to come up with a group that is representative, that gets down to the 10, and that's still started with an invitation to anybody.
Okay. Thank you.
And in the invitation, it is pretty straightforward about the time commitment?
Oh, yes.
And, yeah, the times of things and, you know, so no, everybody will know right off if, when they're doing.
And you'll have to attend all meetings.
And, yeah, that is required.
I can make all the meetings except the second one, then thank you for volunteering, but you need to select people who can attend all meetings.
And of course, things happen, that's different.
But going into it, you need that level of commitment.
All right, I know I'm probably stating the obvious, but just to say it, like, so staff are supported to be part of this process if they?
It's after hours.
It's after hours?
Four to six.
Okay.
We have our time slots.
It's four to six until we do the interviews.
Until we do the interviews and then, yeah.
Staff should be supported, they should get the day off, we pay.
Thank you.
This is how I've seen it everywhere, that's how it should be, in my humble opinion.
Okay. So do we wanna go through the charge?
Yes, I was gonna say, that's the next thing I was, I'll go through that quickly, I think you have that also. Andrea, do you wanna do that, or do you want me to run through it?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so, this is the charge I put together. It's basically the charge that I've used every time, I can't remember when there's been any modification. However, you see something there that doesn't match, please talk about it, okay? So the Mill River School District Board of Directors charges the superintendent screening committee to work in collaboration with the consultant, Elaine Pinkney, to review candidates, to select candidates for interviews, to determine finalists, and to recommend finalists to the board or repost the position. So that leaves open, if you didn't have a candidate, you know, here, I'm just gonna take a minute to say, if you had 100 candidates and they didn't have one candidate at the end that they felt like was the match for you or that even began to, I mean, I'm exaggerating this, right? But you would not have had a good pool and you would repost. On the other hand, if you only had two candidates, but you ended up with a great, great candidate, that's the measure of success. The measure of success in this whole enterprise is you end up with a superintendent who was a really good match for your school and is going to help your school do what I've heard several, several of you mentioned tonight, make sure that you're the best school you could possibly be for your students. So, that's that first part. And then, and then the charge also includes the member responsibilities, attendance at all meetings, completing the homework assigned at meetings, which means there is homework after each meeting, otherwise the meetings will be four hours. Adherence to rules and expectations, and I'll go over that during the meetings. Uh, making recommendations to the board, and again, you know, I just said that by, by statute, the board as a whole hires the superintendent. The search screening committee recommends viable candidates to the board. And the screening committee service is completed when the Mill River School District Board accepts its recommendation, meaning recommendation for candidates for the board to interview. The board still has that final, 'cause this is your responsibility, it's probably the most important responsibility you have, again, in my humble opinion, right? To make sure that you hire the best person and you go into that role, you know, wanting to be partners. That's probably the most important partnership in a school district, the board and the superintendent. So I feel strongly about that. At the bottom are the committee meeting dates, and so that's to make sure that when people say, yes, I wanna serve, and they commit, they know what they're committing to. And of all the dates, only the site visit day is one that, not all 10 people need to participate in. We will ask some people, some people probably are gonna be driving candidates around and that kind of thing, but not everyone needs to participate on that day. But on those other three days, they have to be there. Any questions about that?
Sorry, I keep forgetting to check online. If I don't hear a ding, then I don't see a hand, I don't think of a hand being raised, but I think we're good online.
Okay, so Andrea, I think that, um, you'll, I think it's important that the board votes on this. Again, because this is a really important board responsibility. And if there are no other questions, you know where to reach me.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you very much, you two. And Len and I will be in touch, I'm sure. We're gonna talk a lot. All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you.
Just before we make a motion, I have a couple of questions, but not for them, but for us here. Can we ask B J. to send this out to everybody?
For the mass?
You know, sort of like we did with the superintendent evaluation? And then?
What are we sending out, Len?
The request?
And just, just to be clear.
The charge to the screening committee.
The charge is, oh, or the request for?
Just to be clear, can we send this? Do you want, or can we ask B J.? Do you just want me to ask him?
I'll ask him.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's fine.
We didn't mean me, 'cause I.
Well, putting another thing on her, on his spot, like, is it okay to ask him?
No, no, I just wanna make sure we know who's actually, who we is.
Who's we is doing it. If you're at my office, it's the mice on the walls.
Yeah. No, and, and, you know, what I, what I'm looking at is asking B J. uh, to send this out. Oh, is that what, no, that's not what I want.
That, no, it's the letter of participation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
This one needs to be.
If you ask him to do that, he can do that really easily.
I would think so.
Yes.
Are we, are we good that one of the dates is during break?
Yes, we talked about that.
I figured.
Because it's four to six, I think we're, I think we're good. We may push it back a week, just depending on what we get for feedback after we get.
So what we need to adopt is the charge to the screening committee.
Right.
Sorry.
Nope.
And then this goes out.
Yes. With the edit.
Okay.
You're not board chair.
No, I know.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the charge?
I'll make the motion.
As presented, thank you, Carol. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion on it?
I know I'm being, I just kinda feel like we should respect that break time for staff, but maybe I'm the only one feeling that, maybe, I know there's a sense of urgency around it.
We can talk to Elaine and Jeff.
There could be people who are.
And see if we can push it, we're just trying to.
That might.
Still keep our deadlines.
I know.
And keep our timeframe and not push it too far.
Yeah, so you're thinking there'd be people who wouldn't.
Who are out of town.
Able to do that.
Which, which one is, didn't we talk about that?
Seventeenth is February break. We did, and she kept it on there because we figured.
I thought we changed it.
No, but I, we can ask her if we can push it back a week.
Will that be the 24th, so everything?
Yeah, so everything gets pushed back a week.
Does that feel like it, are you like, there's a reason why you landed, you're, yeah.
You're trying to stay on the timeframe that we have already started.
Yeah.
Like our tight timeframe, but I, I can ask her.
Would you do two, the week of February 10?
No, because of all of our board meetings.
Gray raised her hand.
We've already looked at all that, Gray?
Okay, thank you.
That was just a mistake, never mind.
Okay. You got happy finger over there?
At least it's working.
Yes, and so, no, we, we looked at all of our meetings in February and tried to match everything, so. Um, okay, I will ask.
Go ahead.
Well, I get, no, I mean, well, yeah, I don't know if I'm, it's being, if it's just disruptive, if it messes with the flow, but I was curious if maybe like, if, like, teacher rep, if you're in a rep, how you feel about it being, I know it's a reference.
During break?
Yeah.
I mean. Good question.
It's a Monday night and it's four to six.
It's a very good question, yeah. I don't think that one day should make everything pivot. At the same time, you might get fewer teachers showing interest because of that one date.
Okay.
That's all I could say. I think if a teacher is available and really wants to be, I don't think it'll stop them from trying to do it.
Okay. So the other part of, and I didn't say this when Len and I were on the meeting, if we push back, we're also running into election time.
Okay.
New board members. So I would ask that the board members that want to participate be the ones that are going to stay through March, like your term runs through March. Not it, you need to be re-elected or whatever.
That's a really good point.
Except, obviously, Len and I, but. But that's because if we push 17th to 24th, our week of site visits would actually be the week of, week after election, getting new people sworn in, blah, 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 all that stuff. So that's just why.
March 3rd is a good day.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, and I say that only because?
You leave in April.
No.
Oh, you leave in March, never mind.
6th.
See, yeah.
Okay, keep, keep it, I just wanted to, great, I just wanted to, like, poke it a little bit and see.
Well, and, and, you know, the reality is, we may have to make some adjustments as we go through this.
As we go through, and they're, they're totally fine with that.
Or have you thought at all about your screening committee meetings being hybrid?
Well, I think we'll.
If that would increase access for folks who might be interested. Sorry to throw that in.
No, and I think that is.
Yes.
Pretty much being, yeah, a given, we're gonna do the hybrid.
Yeah, 'cause they, for them.
So you could be on the beach in Bali and still do a hybrid from four to six during happy hour on the 17th.
And I think.
If you have good cell service.
It's good for them, because they're coming from up north.
Yes, so we have to pay them.
Save on.
For room and board.
They were talking, you know, the possibility of the interviews all day.
Yeah.
That they may have to stay overnight.
Yeah.
And we have to.
I think hybrid, hybrid makes that a little more accessible.
Yeah.
At least those two, okay.
Okay, so.
Well, that speaks to the teachers too, as well and staff, that they can be on vacation.
And still call in for two hours.
Yeah. It's possible.
Good thinking.
Okay. Um, with that all said, and, uh, I guess roll call of in favor for, um, the charge for the screening committee? All in favor?
Yeah, I think you need a message.
One, two.
Three, 'cause Stephen joined.
Yeah.
Oh, yay. Okay, so unanimous.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so with that, then we'll get ahold of B J.
And what, I just wanna clarify, I'll get ahold of B J. to send out this letter.
Perfect.
Yes.
Asking folks to participate.
Yep. And then it's all to come back to Len, who wants to whatever, after it sends out. Um, it can do Len and me, um, and then we will go from there.
What the, the question was, who does the information come to? Who, who is it? Not filtered, but who, who does it go to? And, uh, I felt I'd be willing to do that because I don't have a life. Because I don't have anything better to do.
Because you're a helpful person.
Because Len is retired.
So if folks aren't opposed to that?
No. And he's done a hiring before, so. Um, so anyway.
Okay.
All right, so we will get that. So I think we are good on all of that for right now.
Brian, have they, has Elaine, have they contacted Rebecca?
Uh, I don't know, I know they said they were going to, and I gave Rebecca a little heads up.
Yep, to be our central office contact.
Uh, Elaine did reach out to me.
Nobody's contacted me yet directly.
Okay, so we'll touch base with them.
You can touch base.
I will touch base with them. I got a mouse in my pocket.
And to me, it sounded like that was for more things like maybe having copies prepared the day of the meeting.
Yes.
So that might not be the most pressing contact.
No.
But, good, good to know where we are there.
No, but I will email her and.
They just wanted a, a central office person that they could go to.
Okay. We good?
Wonderful.
All right, so next agenda item is the F Y 26 budget.
All right. Reasonable news, which is no news. There were not substantial enough changes that we needed to revise our projections. So the budget document that we looked at in December at our last board meeting on the 18th, the numbers are the same. Uh, Stan could chime in and, and maybe give a little more information there, uh, but we have no reason to update those numbers necessarily for tonight. So what we would ask is a motion to adopt the F Y 26 budget as drafted.
I'll make that motion.
Do some discussion, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, or, uh, Stan, do you wanna add anything to what I said there? Anybody hear footsteps?
Stan? His door was open.
He's there.
Needs noisier shoes.
While we're waiting for Stan.
Hey, Stan.
He's right here.
Ta-da.
Coming in person.
Couldn't unmute myself. Oh, okay.
Anyways, I, I really don't have anything to add to what Brian. Ever since, I think, the last board meeting, that's the last contact we've had with A O E in regards to any new information. Uh, we haven't gotten any final student numbers. And I doubt we'll get any information regarding, uh, yield numbers either. I think we will, we're probably set there as far as any information till we go to a, tell me, so. I don't think we're gonna hear a change in regards to that at all.
Okay.
Um, I just, I have a question. Um, so, anything that happens in the state legislature will not affect this budget, or?
It will, well, because they don't vote on it until after the, uh, towns, towns vote on the school budgets.
So the budget won't change, but the tax?
The tax rate will.
Could.
Yeah, our expenditures won't, but what Stan said, that yield number? The, that was where last year, we were having some of those conversations too, where we said, you know, we're not 100% sure what the legislature is gonna do in the spring. Usually, it's a couple of cent difference. Last year, we were going, we don't think it's gonna be a couple of cent difference, you know? So when it's just a couple of cents, no big deal, we run with the numbers, life is good. Last year, we were concerned that the numbers we put out were gonna be inaccurate. So we tried real hard to let folks know there might be a shift. This year, we think there is gonna be a shift again. So, I put budget numbers up there, our town tax rates. Uh, at, at this point, we've got negative tax rates everywhere except Wallingford. So Wallingford has a 1.58% increase. Uh, I would not be sup- Uh, I would not be surprised if we don't see a maybe one or two percent difference when the state settles everything up. Last year, we got pretty close on our prediction. You know, this year, I'm a little hesitant because of some of the things that we're hearing across the state. So I just want to be really mindful when we talk with the community, we don't go, here's our tax rates, don't they look great? That we want to be mindful that, uh, some of those might be slightly positive after push comes to shove and the legislature does their work. So, you know, if you go to your town residents and say, hey, guess what, Clarendon, it's a negative tax rate this year. It might not be.
Yeah, gotcha.
Our, our projections are based on the numbers that the state gives us. So these are our projections. But it's worth, like, underlining five times, in the after-town meeting day, after all the budgets are, are voted on, then the legislature does their final accounting and things sometimes shift a couple pennies, but this year, we're nervous that it might shift a percentage. Sarah?
Thank you.
Anything you'd say I mischaracterized, Stan?
Nope, it's basically just an estimate.
Any more questions, discussion on it?
I just want to thank Stan and Brian and the finance committee and the folks that showed up to the public forums to help us get this far.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, all in favor of adopting?
No, I can't.
I do see three.
One, two.
Two virtual and Stevens, so I think unanimous.
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you, guys. Um, annual meeting.
Yep, so next is just the annual meeting warning, and that is the language that goes along with, now we have our budget. We drafted the warning language.
Which I'm trying to find.
Yep. So this, you'll see that Article Four has our expenditure number in there from the budget that we just approved. Our, our per pupil spending is in there, that was in that budget document too. Uh, the only thing that's additional calculation here is a five, 5.12% higher. Uh, so this is statutory language that we have to use, so we basically just plug in our numbers. So they're due to a lot of things, like, sorry, we're getting into discussion. This is the warning, motion to adopt the warning.
I'll make a motion to adopt the warning.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, this is.
Now discussion.
Thank you. This is statutory language, we follow this here. There is a 5.12% per student spending. So if you think about all our students in the district, each student, we are spending about 5% more to educate them. Where does that 5% come from? A lot of that 5% comes from healthcare increases that are outside of our hands. Some of that 5% comes from increases that we give to staff. So twenty, roughly 20% of our budget is staffing. So when we give folks a raise, that increases the budget a fair bit. Uh, when you talk about things like buying classroom supplies or even fuel costs, those are all rolled up in 20% of our budget. So when those fluctuate, those are smaller fluctuations than when staffing things fluctuate. So increasing costs for staffing, some is within our control, but then things like the healthcare increases are out of our control. That's what leads to that 5%. And I think Sarah's got a hand too. Len? Or maybe those are lingering votes.
Nope, okay, Len?
Okay.
And then we'll go to Sarah.
Has the state looked at changing that language? I remember when it first started.
Great question. Actually, this language is an update from this summer. Last year, we did not use the same language. So this is their latest update.
Still is lousy.
Yeah. Fair. Call up your reps.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
No, but that's a good question, because I wasn't gonna mention, this is a change from last year's ballot language.
I, I'm just concerned when people look at that, they go, oh my gosh. It's, everything's gonna go up five and a half percent, or whatever it is, and, and that's not true.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
And I think that's where we have to communicate better.
And that's a cost per student. So what, what an interesting scenario where we go, we're projecting tax rate decreases, but the cost per student is going up.
Yeah.
So that, that cost of student shifts based on the number of students.
Yeah.
So we are in a really reasonable place with our budget that are, while, while our tax rate's not going up, just by doing the math, having a couple fewer students, we end up with an increase per student.
We need a line chart.
Yeah.
Really honestly, that says that this and then our student count and this area right here is what?
Wouldn't it be great if you could go to the ballot and see your tax rate?
Yeah.
And say yes or no to the tax rate?
Yeah, yep.
But that's not the way our system works. We don't do that figuring until all the votes are cast. So we're voting based on a projection. If we're voting based on a projection, they're not gonna go with tax rate, because that's the last, most variable one, probably. Our per student spending is probably not gonna change a lot. Our expenditure budget isn't gonna change, because we set our extent, expenditure budget. That final accounting is really just gonna change that tax rate. So these are safer projection numbers.
Really honestly, in March, we should vote on everything else, and then like in the end of April, have this part of it. But it costs the towns too much to do that stuff.
And, you know, and I think we have an education finance system in the state that does flip things and makes it really hard if we all have local control of our budgets, but we all pool our money.
Yeah.
We can't see how much money we've pooled until we vote our budgets. And it isn't till we pool our money when we figure out what our tax rates are gonna do. So I think the, the system actually makes it work that way, which we would kind of feel like is backwards. But the system is actually designed to go through those steps in that order, which is a little crazy, but.
Sarah, do you still have something you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. We saw a hand, not a hand. We're just wondering.
So this is the warning that will get signed and will get posted, and will be all set for our annual meeting on February 27th, so long as the board approves the warning.
That was discussion, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
All in favor of adopting this?
One, two.
Let's see, three on there.
Three unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Um. With that being said, after this, or before this, at the town, at the meeting, annual meeting, we're going to need a new clerk, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we, Crystal Usher has been doing it for years, and, um, she will no longer be doing it, so.
Let me be, let me be a little more specific. Crystal, Crystal is the clerk for this year. So she will preside over this annual meeting.
Yes, she will be there.
Typically, at the annual meeting, you call for nominations from the floor for the next year's clerk. So we need to have a candidate to nominate for next year's clerk.
Because she will not be.
So if you know folks in the community who would be willing to do that work, and if you have questions about what that work looks like, it's really overseeing the, the vote counting, and then, uh, doing the minutes of the annual meeting, and then overseeing the vote counting on Election Day. If you want to know more specifically what that entails, you think you have somebody interested, give us a shout. And Rebecca, we can connect with you and let you know exactly what that looks like.
And we do have a moderator, and hopefully he will.
Do they need to have any kind of, like, certification or?
Nope.
It's just an elected position. Good question.
Yes, so.
Good reminder, because I.
In the back of your head, because she's not, yeah.
Invite somebody to the meeting.
Okay, so on the committee reports, personnel contracts, that's Len. I forgot what I was doing.
Um, personnel committee met earlier this evening, and we have a couple of contracts to look at. First of all, uh, I'd like to make a motion to offer a contract to Ethan Studley, point one oh full-time equivalency, educational support staff at Wallingford. Clarendon, that's what it is.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
I'll just slide quick discussion. And Mill River grad, former employee, glad to have him back.
Yep.
We have resignations.
What?
You're good.
Two resign.
Have a resignation, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Peter Hamel, who is a Wallingford fifth grade teacher.
You can second it.
Did you hear that? Pat seconded it. Kim?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Any discussion on it? Questions? All right, all in favor of his resignation? We are unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, last contract. Like to make a motion to accept the, um.
Resignation.
Resignation, thank you. Of Jack Kearney.
John.
On.
Goes by Jack.
Oh, Jack, oh, you're right, okay. Sorry, now I'm tripping him up.
You're all correct.
All right.
Jack Kearney has a Clarendon Elementary School par educator.
I'll second.
Is that you, Carol?
Yes. That was Carol.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, you're good.
Discussion. All in favor?
Sarah, are you good?
Saw three.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just reminder, Len reaches out to folks to try and set up exit interviews, so all of that stuff will be working.
Yep.
And we do have things lined up for coverage already in those scenarios, which is good.
And then the next, uh, personnel committee meeting is February 5th at 6:30. Thank you all.
Um, okay, so we'll move on to policy, which Nick is not here, so.
So I can just say, there hasn't been a meeting since your last board meeting, but we do have a meeting on the 14th here at 5:30, and it's hybrid.
So on next agenda, we will carry over exactly what is on this policy, on the description? No?
Well, the, the ones we have tonight are second read, so we can act on those even without a policy meeting, yeah. So we've got the H1 and the D1 to adopt tonight.
H8.
Sorry, thank you. H8 and D1, I can't read.
Okay, so I make a motion for, to adopt policy H8.
And?
And D1.
And D1, which was formerly G14.
To adopt, or?
I said adopt.
No, I know, I'm just asking for, to adopt, okay.
I'll second.
Vote it.
Go ahead.
Then he got it.
Any questions, discussion? Don't ask me. Um, okay, all in favor? One, two, three.
Yep.
Okay.
Those were pretty.
So then there's a.
Cutter.
Yeah.
Uh, policies that we adopted from the Vermont School Boards Association.
And then we have D3 for rescind. So, and that's just probably a new dates. So I make a motion to rescind policy D3, which is staffing and job descriptions.
Right.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And again, the, the School Board Association has eliminated, eliminated that policy.
Okay.
So we felt we didn't need to have it.
Um, okay, all in favor? This is all part of the cleanup process.
One, two, three, okay.
We're good. Um, yep, next meeting is the 14th. At 5:30, um, hybrid. Okay, so now we're on to buildings and grounds. And we don't have Nick here in his chair.
We haven't had a meeting, but we do have a next meeting, which is January 27th at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Brian, is this where we talk, would talk about that Shrewsbury playground?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
So, uh, I can, let me pull that up real fast.
Well, if that's gonna be talked about at committee, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk. It's gonna be talked about at?
Oh, no, 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 sorry, 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 tonight. And I'll explain why. So you have a cover sheet in front of you talking about getting bids for the Shrewsbury playground. Uh, I think the important things to know there is, this is private donation funding that has been raised, and there's been a committee at Shrewsbury, uh, the PTO has been working on this project. The only reason I bring this to you is because of the dollar amount. We can't write a check for that dollar amount without the board approval. Even though these are privately raised donations, we accept the donations, we put them in an account, because we always have to, uh, very cleanly track our money. Uh, so this comes to you, uh, this evening, asking for approval to cut the check with, with the understanding of where that funding came from.
Okay, thank you for explaining.
How much do we have in donation?
And I can answer questions if, can we get a motion and then we'll?
Oh, sorry.
No, all good, all good.
Okay, I'll make a, a motion to approve, uh, writing the check for this playground.
To whom?
Oh, yeah, to, the recommendation is.
Oh, to the recommendation.
Petanelli and Associates.
Yeah, Petanelli and Associates.
Perfect, thank you. So, discussion, um.
Yeah, where, how much do we have?
We have raised a little bit more than is necessary. So we've maybe raised about $90,000, and you can see that the cost right now is 84.9 and some change.
Nine seventeen fifteen, so can we?
So we have sufficient funds at this point.
Later state that that remainder of the money, like, goes to, like, wood chips or something that's associated with the playground that we're putting in?
Uh, it's likely that that's what's gonna happen.
I'm just so our community knows that it's, we're not.
I think it's fair to say that.
Rolling six grand into something else.
No, the PTO, that's in an account where we can't do anything with that funding, and if we tried to move it somewhere, we'd come to you to move it.
Okay.
So that's something that would stay in the PTO's realm to try and.
In Shrewsbury's PTO realm. Just so community is very clear that.
Yeah, the, the rest of those donations don't just go somewhere else, yeah.
And this is money that they raised themselves for this, it's nothing.
Yes, correct. This is something that the PTO has worked hard to campaign and do this work all.
Yeah, Kristen Semenati says it in her letter, but they have, the PTO has been amazing with working really hard for years, so. And it's really needed.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we heard, B and G Committee heard that, uh, last year from, from community, and it's been on our priority sheet. It's just something that we've, you know, when we've looked at heating versus playground, we've knocked off the things like heating first, but the playground is in need of update.
Okay.
Other, other questions?
All right, all in favor of adopting the recommendation? Blah, 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 blah. Great.
I see two, I see three. Great, thank you.
All right. Yes, as long as we make very clear that the PTO is holding the remainder of their, and Mill River is not handling it. Um, community engagement, right?
Yes. Um, well, first I want to thank Pat for, um, letting us know that, first of all, there's lots of winter sports events going on, so check the calendar and, um, visit those events. Today and tomorrow is the Winter Visual Art Show here at Mill River. I came early and walked around. It's really pretty impressive, uh, the work that the students are showing, and I encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to walk around tomorrow, it looks like it's gonna be going on. like it's going to be going on. Shrewsbury PTO is meeting tomorrow night, January 9th at 6:30, and the Clarendon PTO is meeting January 14th at 6:00 PM, if anybody's interested in those. Our next meeting will be before the second board meeting, so it'll be the 22nd.
Yes.
A notice went out saying it was the 15th that we're going to re-warn that, it should be the 22nd.
That's what I had on here three times.
I know, well, we had, we had said in our meeting we were going to meet the 15th tentatively, and then when we found out the board meetings were being moved, we decided to piggyback on those, so that community members have an opportunity first to come to have the conversation, then we have the engagement committee, and then if people are interested, they can stay to the board meeting, and they're just, it's one night. And one thing I did want to mention in terms of community engagement, a lot of times, and Norm, this is kind of to something you were talking about, like, it just seems like we just kind of roll through things. A lot of times, the discussions happen at the committee meetings. So, for instance, the gate, we had a lot of discussion at the committee meeting, at the committee level before it came to the full board. So I just want anybody in the community who's watching to know that if you have a particular interest, policy, or community engagement, or finance, that, that real, the real discussions happen, and that they're a little bit more informal, I think, committee meetings, would you guys say, than the formal board meeting. So that's why sometimes I felt that way when I used to watch the meetings, like, what, why is everybody just voting on it? Well, it's already been, you know, really hashed out in, at the committee level, so I just wanted to say that. And we hope to see people, we're going to follow up on the Mill River 50th anniversary plans at our next meeting, but we welcome anybody who wants to bring any topic to us, we want to hear it.
Stephen, do you have comments?
Or a lingering vote, maybe?
Or a really tired arm?
Sorry, that was said.
I was going to say, you're next, you're just, like, jumping the gun here.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Reminder with, like, the calendar events, Pat, thank you for doing that, it's awesome. Is there an easy way for folks to find it? How do you? I haven't, but, yeah.
I don't, I think if you download it to your drive, then you can find it in your drive, is what I would say, it's really just for board members, but, you know, it could be shared with anybody, it's nothing private, it's just for us to know.
Yeah, it's coming off the school calendars, basically, so. Okay, negotiations, we...
Yep, we've got a meeting with the union coming up on the 21st.
Okay.
So we're keeping rolling.
All right, finance, Stephen, there you go. Thank you for logging on, late.
Yeah, so we haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting, and we just approved our proposed budget, which is great. We have payable warrants. Let's see, we've got accounts payable warrants, we've got general fund in the amount of $46,224.98. General fund in the amount of $23,732.37. ASP for $256.41, and lunch for $50,653.11, for a total of $120,866.87. We also have student activity from Shrewsbury Mountain School for $1,639.12. Do we have a motion to accept the accounts payable warrants?
I'll make that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yeah, one, two, three. You're unanimous, thank you.
Great, thank you. And for payroll warrants, we have December 20th in the amount of $721,127.61, and December 23rd in the amount of $225.70, and from January 3rd in the amount of $630,197.58, for a total of $1,351,550.89. We have a motion to accept these payroll warrants.
I'll make a motion.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
One, two, three.
You are good.
Great. Ryan, there was another thing on here.
And I can do that one if you want, if you don't have it in front of you.
Yeah, why don't you do it? Because I'm not entirely sure what I'm looking at.
Yeah, we've got another accounts payable warrant, and this is to the Vermont State Treasurer for Retirement Payments. This is FY25, in the amount of $14,569.40. So I'd ask for a motion to approve that payment.
Make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great, great.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, what is it?
It was sent out a little later today.
I know, I understand that, but I don't understand...
Retirement system payments that we do, I think, once a year.
Yep.
Stan, do you want to be a little more specific about that?
So, in it, yeah.
It's the teachers that are paid with federal funds. We have to pay their pension contributions to the treasurer with federal funds. So this came out a few years ago, that it's, you know, if you're paying somebody with federal funds, then the pension costs may be paid with those, with those federal funds. So it's not local dollars.
No, no.
We were...
I've never seen it before, and there were several checks, it looked like to me.
There's several different people.
Right. Oh, okay, okay.
But they all totaled $14,000.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just didn't, I had no clue.
Yeah, it's all different people.
Ask the question.
Yeah.
Good to know.
I mean, that's most of the time, anyway.
Thank you, Stan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, any more discussion?
All in favor?
We're good.
All right. We do not have a scheduled finance committee meeting. We're waiting to make sure that we pass the budget tonight, to see what we would need for that. I'll reach out to the committee, I think, to schedule another meeting, but I'm...
And typically, Stephen, we would, unless there's a need to look at any crazy updates, which we're hopeful there aren't going to be at this point, we would wait until reorganization and meet really quickly after reorg, actually, because we don't really have a ton to do with the budget set and going to town meeting day, so. Meeting in, in other words, meeting in February wouldn't be too useful for us.
Okay, so the only thing I'm thinking is that I would like to make sure that we have board of education and kind of communications pieces sort of in place for the annual meeting for the town.
Oh, it's a good idea.
Those sort of things, I don't think, we don't necessarily need a meeting for that.
Yeah, no.
I can start working up some, just kind of bullet point pieces and things like that for folks, and we can just send them around by email.
Yeah, awesome.
That'd be great, thanks, Stephen.
Great, I think that's all I've got then, thank you.
Thank you. All right, transact other legal business. Do we have other legal business? Okay, agenda building.
So we would be queued up for our quarterly sports update, if that makes sense, at our next meeting.
Okay.
We had talked about scheduling, planning for Teacher Appreciation Week before we get too close to March. So I had tentatively put that in on our January meeting.
When is that, when is Teacher Appreciation Week?
March something?
March something?
Yeah, second week.
May, that's what I thought.
Was it May?
May, yeah.
Okay.
So March, we start perfect.
We appreciate everybody.
Okay, so if you want to bump that to another meeting a little bit later?
Can we bump that? I would like to add the yearbook photo to the agenda.
I think we should go over as a board to the things that Norm brought up, and like the different...
So we do have...
Do we go over Robert's rules?
We did have goals education on that meeting, so using that to look at open meeting information.
Yep.
I think makes tons of sense.
And do you think by then, do you think we'll need another update, just on the superintendent stuff?
Or is that all going to be happening in committee at that point?
No, I don't think so.
Um, we may be, like...
No, because the next meeting is until the town.
If something pops up, let's figure it out by early next week.
Yeah.
Well, or by, like, Thursday next week, we'll have time to...
So if we get that email out and stuff, we may possibly have our committee.
Yeah.
Like, for the 22nd.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, maybe a brief update.
All right.
Let me just put it up there as a discussion, not action.
Yes, and if I need to change it.
And if it's two minutes, it's two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Two things that we need, by statute, we have to set our choice numbers in and out, so we need to do that before February 1st, so I'd ask that we do that at our next meeting. Stan also has an item that we do annually that we would like to do at that meeting too, that's a quick review, sign off on one, and the name of that's escaping me, unless Stan wants to mention specifically what that's called. It's slipping my mind right now.
Yeah, I can't.
It's called Financial Management Questionnaire.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Basically, details of responsibilities within the financial office.
Yep.
I also would...
So those are both brief items.
Like, on the agenda, the Wallingford lock.
Good.
That will give us two weeks. We get a new address, get it sent back out.
Well, yeah, we'll figure that out, we'll keep doing everything we've been doing, we'll keep doing it.
But even if it's two minutes, I want to talk about it.
Yep, yep.
But by then, something should have happened, correct?
Well, I'm going to hope so, and then it'll be two minutes, and we'll say it's good.
It's done, right, yeah.
Yep.
As we have been doing the whole time, we will keep working, and, you know, things might pop up, and things might go slower than we hope, but we're going to keep working, you know.
Even if it's a two-second check-in, I want the community to know.
We're going to keep talking with the folks that we've been talking with, and keep trying to figure out the information, and as new details pop up, we're going to do what we can to explore those details and figure out how to accomplish that.
My understanding was that the motion was that the homeowner would be notified 48 hours to remove the lock.
Well, I'm, we mailed the letter, we might have not mailed it to the right address.
Right, so is, once she gets it, then that's what's going to happen, 48 hours, and...
I, I am very hesitant to...
Put a time.
To say that somebody is going to go and disrupt somebody else's property until we know that we are, we have explored all of our options, and we are on...
This person has disrupted our, but this person has disrupted our property by putting a chain on her gate.
I want to...
This is great. If somebody came onto my property and put a lock on my garage door, wouldn't I be empowered to cut it off? And I believe that Erica conceded that that fence and gate are, belongs to the school. Just curious.
I would like to put it on the agenda again, because I really need to deal with this.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate the opportunity to try and continue to explore the information that has come our way in a way that keeps our staff feeling comfortable and supported.
Well, to me, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think there's enough questions, and based on what she said tonight, that, you know, I'm just not so, and I voted, by the way, and I'll say, I voted to take the lock off. Now I'm not so sure.
We are, we are going to continue to try.
Yeah.
That is what I can guarantee we will do.
Because I, I think the last thing we need is to get in trouble with our neighbor or the town of Wallingford, because, I mean, and what she said and what's, I, I don't know, that's, that's my point, that's, that's my only point. You know, not that I don't believe you, and that I believe her and think you're not telling the truth, or vice versa, it just raised some doubts in my mind as to how clear we are on this whole thing.
And we will keep working at it, we will continue to try, absolutely, and there might be, there might be roadblocks that, that pop up, and we will sort through the roadblocks as best we can, and we will keep letting you know when that happens, and we will continue to try.
Can we, like, gather everything we know about this gate and contact legal?
I think that's the next step after we work with...
Please, so that we can figure out exactly what needs to happen, and in the meantime, having that letter resent certified, so she has paper copy?
We'll, we'll absolutely follow up.
Of what it is?
We'll absolutely follow up on that. Generally, we would seek legal counsel after we have sorted through things with the town and plan and commission and that piece, you know. If we seek legal counsel now, legal counsel is going to have a lot of questions about the zoning piece, and we don't know that yet.
Yes, so that's why I want to get everything together, figure everything out, contact legal.
Yep.
Like, get this taken care of.
And, and the challenging piece is, that might take a couple extra days, once we figure things out, to reach out to legal counsel and sort through that with them, you know, the, the problem with all of this is, as new information comes out, sometimes it takes longer to sort through. And I know that's frustrating for folks.
Can we get information on whether that fence is necessary at all?
We don't need the fence.
I mean, that's, you know, if you take down the fence, the gate's not a problem anymore.
School, school did.
School did.
Yeah, so if, so, I mean, I was going to go down there today and look, just to see it, because I, I have sort of a memory.
No, don't, don't do that.
But here's the thing, it was too cold out, that's the only reason I didn't go. He's wearing his shorts.
But I bet they had outdoor recess.
I bet they did, but...
That fresh air is good, good for everybody.
Well, I... Can we just, like, as of tonight, and that, all our brains are going to be fried in about...
We will keep doing everything we can.
Please, and try to get a resolution to this, because this has been going on way too long.
It has been going on way too long, Andrea.
But we need to, I think, get whatever together, and then we need to contact legal, and in the meantime, we're going to send her that letter, because apparently it never really got to work.
So somebody signed it, who signed it?
I signed it.
No, but I mean, it was a certified letter, right?
It came back.
We will continue to sort through that.
It didn't come back signed.
No, so we must have the wrong address.
We will keep sorting through that, and we will give an update to the board.
That sounds good.
And I'd like to just add one comment, and then we can let this go. I support what Brian is doing in the extremely tedious process of working through the niceties and myths, but I'd also like to offer the comment that 90% of what Eric said tonight, well, I'm not going to use the word I'd like to use, but it is highly inappropriate.
Please, yeah.
All the descriptions of her husbands, who I know quite well, her security, his security qualifications, and her time in the Army, that was just wrong.
Okay, we...
You should never have said that, so let's move on, I agree with what you're saying, Andrea, let's wrap this thing up, but wow, I was mortally offended by her comments, I really was, sorry.
And that's, that's, no, that's fine, but we also have to take into consideration, she is also a community member, and she's allowed to say what she needs to in public comment. So anyway, it is on, we are moving on. We will go through everything. I don't have a need for executive session, does anybody else have a need for executive session?
None I'm aware of.
All right, then I am adjourning at 8:51 PM. Thank you all, and we will be in touch.